Hello viewers and welcome to Kida Fan Salon Discoveries. Me, N'assana Tola Belsela. Well, today we're here at the great prestigious city council. All USA Kida Fan films, they collaborate with Med and Production for premiere of the movie titled "The Scuffle". "The Scuffle", now one beautiful African story, where it tells so much about Africa. Inside this movie here, so you see USA a woman stand up for say me, a wife for becoming president of my nation, a wife for all my country, because we all believe say, when a woman get the power and position, it will do the right thing for in family, in community, and in country itself at large.
Katia, I would like to say prayer, especially in this time. There's a movement to prayer. Christian prayer, please. Bless you. If you not be happy for a poet. Ladies and gentlemen, please put your hands together. Don't say that your prayer, wake up to the findings and go to the truth, or everything else there. Papa God, I will take you taking. We don't come here, so man plan for come, we don't seek in a way. So man buy new clothes, we can't dispose them, and then go where. So man plan for using motor car, the motor cannot car home. So man plan different different thing there for tonight. You know, we say we better pass them. We make a possible for here tonight, but with grace, we tell you taking, we appreciate you. Every man, woman, where they are picking, Papa God sustain them. He then will go there in our life. Every man where they work hard for sustain the family, Papa God keep them. Every woman where they work hard for sustain the beginning for go school, Papa God keep them. Papa go school, don't look again, they not cause school feed them. Where the man, they don't worry, mama, they hard boy, Papa God provide. Provide for me. Papa God, so man buy motor car, he put key, let go enjoy, he die, you know that. The Lord have mercy. And continue for bless, we pick it in the night. For the Jesus name we pray. I know you all singing. Al Fatihah. Al Fatihah Jalan. Awujulillahi bin Asho intamani rajim. Bissilahi rahmanir rahim. Alhamdulillahi rabbil ala hadir. Almadiyaahein. Maali diyaunite. Iya ta'adu iya alastahein. Idina asra fa'asakeen. Ra'atala diyaan ta'alahein. Ha'im ma'udugalai wonedone. Aami. Sada kala wulose. We like to answer it. The easy we make, we don't move back, we want to say that peace. Yeah, fatih we can't see you, now just, now just add evil man. Or the easy we make, equal to the house to we them, they cook up. So every time, in the bit of the time where they less they drive. I'm crying, I'm crying, I'm going to make it, effect be. So tell the organist, he say, ah, this man the beat, so he say, ah, nah, he crying, I can't care. For not to no more cut those beats. We are about to watch a very classic movie tonight. And entertainment actually grow from one end to another end. I was an actor. I was part of this acting stuff. It's kind of expensive. It takes a lot. So I decided to go to the other side. Right? Decided to be a comedian, say useless things to a lady. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, there is a man here, I've worked with him. He has produced number of movies, Mind Games, and plenty of other movies. And he was an actor, decided to be producer. He is currently a very new, um, barista as you meet. He just passed the bar exams. And yet, if you come to the bar, please put your hands together for this just this man. As he will make a statement of the act of producers. Please give up, if you're not, if you're not ashamed of him, please put your hands together for him. Thank you. He was teacher at 14, at 4A College. Did at 41 as well. I'm gonna, thanks for your presence here.
You always be prepared. Um, I was not prepared to make a statement, but you will forgive me, I will be co-switch. I'm here to talk on behalf of the producers. Um. The, uh, the, the movie production is a kind of profession in its own right. I must say. Just like when you say the legal profession, the medicine, engineering. Uh, the problem of getting over is, is really is that we treat the movie for productivity. It's a see, people are treating. Uh, okay, it's back, okay, sorry. Uh, people are not treating the movie industry with seriousness. We have, people are making money, they have money, but they see the movie as something that will crash your investment. Except for those who have passion for it, like some of us. Like you were just saying, uh, there is a distinction, a tier line between an executive producer and that of a producer. That of an executive producer is somebody who is having the money and believe in the industry and say, okay, you guys, you have talent. I think I can invest in you. Unlike the producer is somebody probably that have gone through the rank and file from like an actor, um, a director, or like you said, the screenwriter, and so on, so forth. Out into the stage of a producer. So somebody is grounded in the field. So most times, that's why you do see a mixed blend of, um, financing and acting as well. I think somebody I will make mention of is like Jimmy B., there's Morfini, um, Paparini. These are people that have gone through the, going through the actual, like, the grooming. And so this happening, and think about the investment, pay cast, pay production. Trust me, the producer now will not continue. It will take him time to invest in another project. It happened for me when I produce Mind Game. I think what I got is a combination for Mind Game as producer. And like the enemy, another international awards coming in. But when you talk about cash returns, when you invest, you need returns. It's not coming in, it's confiscated. That is why most of the people we see the producer, the Val, Jimmy B., are not a best. They do it for passion, they like it. If it's about profit, forget it. Scuffle, I will say roughly, I'm not too busy to eat, but it's over $10,000, like I did for Mind Game when I was in the state. It's over $10,000. I invested $10,000 or over in Mind Game. Think about it, think about the returns. It was feeling a lot over the country. Not play so far, but I the two head for motivate, if you get money.
Kamputa. Kamputa. Thank you very much. Please put your hands together for Madame Katia Jalloh. He is, uh, Sujismo. And I want great talk. So ladies and gentlemen, I would please like you to hug and welcome. She is the producer and the executive producer of this great movie. Put your hands together for Doctor Isatou Kakee Jalloh. Please, we are not clap other, we are not clap other. Don't show some great sweetness and appreciation in life when you celebrate people you only celebrated. Please, on call, please, not give him a round of applause as he come forward. Yeah, we are not clap for her, it not easy for put this thing together, for a two, to be a producer and executive producer as well. And also for dress in deep style, beautiful attire. I'm seeing whites, that will lead the gentleman, a round of applause for the producer. And next to me is the producer, Madame Doctor Isatou Kakee Jalloh.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Kida Ammani, and good evening, good evening. Salaam alaykum wrakmatullah. Ova raqtaatuh. I hope see, we all ready there, so today, we make an safe for left now, so we will now lose them safely. Uh, one for safety, four for mukutengi, for now, all we can, we left one two out of this rain. And for the now, for this movie, you were within us, so for can witness, not to about me, not to about Doctor Isatou Kakee Jalloh, no more, about Sierra Leone. How we go move the industry forward. So as we don't make an ask, so we tell the almighty taking. So I want to say, um, we want to say, alhamdulillah. Karabila ala min tanubiyah, yeah. I say this for many different reasons. Um, today, I get me family, at least, uh, whole, we travel with me from the state, um, here. And we come for a vacation, but we feel say we will still do something for we country, Sierra Leone, when at this premiering. I'm so passionate about salon, so then see USA take me, not the film industry, not the entertainment sector. We make, and we invest heavily into films them, where we know say, they think they are so, not to salon no more, they for watch them, they for watch them out of Sierra Leone. They for watch them now, all that countries them, where if you say, we industry evolve. So we, we don't choose for say, we want for, we invest in film, love we not discourage. Because I know, we brother, we they talk just now about, uh, the frustration what we can go through as producers them, as executive producers them. But it not easy, it take passion, it take dedication, it take determination. And I believe say, you need all that plus the money for make sure say, the film industry, the investment where they do, it become something. So I want to take this time, this opportunity before we begin, when it can, when it actually can start to play the scuffle. That we can do as soon as I get off the stage. Please, the technical people there, get ready for the amazing and most anticipated movie, blockbuster movie called "The Scuffle". So we all been a part of this project, now be proud of yourself. But before going further, I want to say many, many thanks to all the producers them at the house. All the producers, say, please raise your hand and say, you know, bravo to yourself, because you've been doing so well, so well, producers. Thank you, thank you, thank you, from, uh, from myself, Doctor Isatou Kakee Jalloh, from Darabi Ekaba, the president for Sierra Leone Film Guild, Afan John, another producer for "The Scuffle", we want to say thank you, and also our director and cast, the entire cast and crew. We want to appreciate everybody within us. I was proud to see this film, and I know you will be proud too, trust me. In the first five to 10 minutes of this film, you will see what we are talking about. And you can see throughout the entire film, and that's a promise. If you want to stay here and watch the entire film, it's going to be played throughout. Okay, so welcome, welcome to the premiering of the most anticipated movie premiere that is called "The Scuffle".
Breaking news. Doctor Diana Moigbed, Mr. Ibrahim Rashid Bayo, Madame Yadeh Sharif, and Benjamin Menelik George have all withdrawn from the presidential race.
Fellow Sierra Unions, when I become your president, I promise.
All what's the PDA has ever done since inception is promise, promise, promise.
I'll let my illustrious record speak for itself.
As both parties gear on for the next election, the question still remains, who is fit to run the country?
I wanna say thank you to my family, thank you to the almighty Allah, to my parents, and also to my co-producers and, um, the directors. And at the same time, to all you amazing, wonderful guests here tonight. I wanna say thank you, I appreciate you all for being here. Um, you are watching so many different things. I believe this is something you want to be part of. Uh, House of Stars coming to you. Next week, we are going to launch this at the Radisson Blue Hotel. So not me some more, because this one is the win host.
Yes.
It a win host. We give time to, uh, the CEO for Games Empire at some point, let you can talk small about the animates, we not see him. No, it's not one, I'll next one. So thank you, thank you, you know, um, to the directors, the actors in the house, you know, to the producers as well, as well as the technical people, to our chairperson here, Kida Ammani, I wanna say thank you. If I don't get to come back on stage, uh, I just wanna thank my entire team, uh, my family and friends that are here today, I wanna say thank you. And this country, uh, this film, to tell you the truth, I don't wanna talk anymore, I just want you to watch it and be the one to make the.
This is.
The critical points that you think you might find, because I mean, I won't be critical. Tell me that way, trust me. You give me if you are critical. So that way, I want for make finger, where the big boundaries. Also, the wonderful, we watch now salon, I'm fit them. When we go, we say, what you done, what you. Then Sam will be proud of we country Sierra Leone. And in all this, Allah will embrace each other, love work together, love be a collaboration to one another. I want for thank everybody, we buy ticket, we can now zoom. I want for thank everybody, all the media platforms them, including me, oh, when I kid a fan discoveries. And I want for tell AYB thank you. I want for tell SLBC thank you. I want for say thank you to Sierra Network Radio. I want for say thank you to, uh, the bloggers them, I wanted to connect blog. I want for say thank you to, uh, Ibrahim Prosper. I want for say thank you to Sarah Kali, and to our all way blog for we. Uh, also Afri Radio, as well as AYV Radio and Culture Radio. I want for say thank you, I know I miss anybody, but if I forget, trust me, I'll come back up there and say thank you, but if I miss you, I'm so sorry. But to tell you true, love watch this premiere, "The Scuffle", I present to you.
Thank you very much, doctor. Um, you know, there are so many doctors here, except Doctor La, exactly.
So I'm expecting informative education, I'm expecting entertainment. I'm also expecting the fact that we are in that atmosphere of accepting and believing in our own. That's what I'm expecting, because this, it looks good, it looks really good.
I feel excellent, I feel marvelous, you know, to see Sierra Leones embracing Sierra Leone content. I think that's something we all will be happy and excited about. "The Scuffle", as we all seen the trailer, it's a political movie. It talks about women's empowerment, women taking leadership. And, um, this is a film that we can relate to in our African nation, seeing that there is very little women, you know, going into politics. So I believe this will inspire so many other women.
Don't forget, you know, that the last, Muhita standing, inside this industry will be right now. Now make, you like that, the last and last energy, a group of time for work for.
Ladies and gentlemen, before we watch the movie, I have, uh, honored to call the person that go to officially launch the movie. She is so emotional, passionately, as she wants to watch the movie. It's a, but according to my own, you know, I can't allow that without calling, oh, the, I have English fan. It's a little bit. We have trouble. Ladies and gentlemen, this lady happens to be, and, uh, she is working currently as the director of strategic coordination management at the Ministry of Foreign Affairs. Ladies and gentlemen, please put your hands together for Doctor Kadijatu Grace. I'm not back here, I'm here.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. You guys all seem excited, you are at a movie premiere, come on. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Uh, it looks like it's just this, this corner that's excited. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Good, I'm glad we at the premiere, my name is Kadijatu Grace. My singular job here tonight is to officially, officially launch, um, this pride that we are about to see. Um, I am proud to be standing here, I'm also humbled. Um, in the US, I am one of the product of the US Nollywood. I'm part of the US Nollywood film. And I have been opportune to be part of two big movies. Um, Paparazzi with Van Vika, and there is another movie with patient Ozofo, um, Mama G, as we know her, Dogu Wahala. And I stopped and went back to school because I wanted more in life. Um, before we launch this, I want us to have the mindset of thinking. I can not to be level. Sierra Leone. Sierra Leone. Sierra Leone, how many times did I call us? Sierra Leone. It's time, we tell our stories beyond the borders, through movies. And when you look at the history of film and the whole of West Africa, who is really the best? Sierra Leone owns it, but then now we are dragging. We are begging other actors to come into our country, after our films, tell our stories the way they choose to. And then we sit there and watch them, and we pay for these things. But then when it comes to us, we don't want to do it. I can relate to him. I can relate to so many of you that are sitting here. When we talk about human capital development, it starts with the movie industry, guys. When we tell our stories, we gotta start from home. If you don't support your own, who is going to? Let's say you come from a village, where the, how they call, Loko Masama. And I get one tilla, na Loko Masama. And this one tilla, now I only come to na Loko Masama. But then, na day, I get the habit of degrading, this one great tilla, when I day, I only go. Do you know what you have done? You have messed everything up before you got to it. So what do we do, how do we solve this problem that we're crying about? This one tilla, I get, when I day, saw all my punches, but still not the courage for make it go. Now, look at it in the movie light. If, excuse me, young lady, what's your name, please? Agnes, I need so for we all. If Agnes so for me to assist, if I tell Agnes say, I want lady to assist, hold me tight there, Agnes so I'm so big. Wow, Agnes, you do well, oh, this is fine, but I've been telling you, make and tight for me. You are next to make and tidy, yeah? What have you done? You have sown a seed of not only telling her, I believe in you, but you can do better, because I see better. That is what we have done. And so let us look at it in the movie light. We want to hear our stories, we want to tell our stories, but then we don't know how. And then we sit there and complain, not to the government's responsibility, na me and you, when I act, oh, na me, your responsibilities, to produce a good product. Give me a good story and see if you will not be the talk of the town. We have movie critiques here, we have movie producers, we have investors that are interested in sponsoring the next project. But how can we tell our stories if we cannot produce good product? You don't just wanna act film for acting sake, all man are an artist. Everybody now go act once upon a time. Na like? In our homes, in our schools, career, marriages, everything, we all go act. But the truth of the matter is, when you are a gift, a talent, one of the things that you get to do is to actually practice that act. They have film academies, yes, you know, which they eat, but I know where the producer them, I create one. Hello, I call to teach and train these actors, how to present, how to talk, how to, waiting, waiting on the storyline, let it give you exactly what the storyline is. And guess what? You don't have to go cry again, my brother say, they not help me, now then they come to you. Say that female, I love it, I like it, how can we help? So as we cry, say, we know they help you, say, let me also look, because we will point finger, so, this one will come back to me. Let me learn for take responsibilities and accountability of the work. Now this, I had the story, I mean, it is phenomenal. You have no idea, I see half, I was in tears. Just like, um, doctor just said, sit tight, wait and watch till you see an authentic, real movie, where somebody actually took the time to not just put money into the movie, but actually make sure that they are producing while you are sitting here. So ladies and gentlemen, as I said, my name is Kadijatu Grace, I have overstated my welcome. I just want all of us to stand up, please. Drum roll. For the first time in the history of Sierra Leone, the moment you all been waiting for, the Air Force One has landed, ladies and gentlemen, I present to you officially the movie, 2023, "The Scuffle".
Good morning, Free Town, good morning, Sierra Leone. Around this time tomorrow, Doctor Keter will be making her final stop on her campaign tour.
Fellow Sierra Unions, when I become your president, I promise.
All what's the PDA has ever done since inception is promise, promise, promise.
Breaking news, the presidential ask.
As both parties gear on for the next election, the question still remains, who is fit to run the country?
With what has happened, do you think it's advisable for your clients to return to the election?
I don't see why she can't, she's still innocent until proved otherwise.
Politics in this part of the world is such a tightly game.
We are going to fight until we get justice.
Justice for Soma, I'm a full on a dog.
No man is a prophet.
A woman is not fucking fit to rule this country, do you understand?
You are under arrest.
Under arrest for what?
Mother, man.
Mother, mother who?
Amnesty.
For what?
Eighty percent of the mass want her to win your excellence.
A woman's place is in the kitchen. Wake up, Fatu, you can never, ever become the president of this country, never.
We want you to make him win the upcoming elections.
Do your job and behave like a good boy, do you understand?
Yes, sir.
What Sierra Leone needs right now is not another politician, but a true leader.
There's no doubt in our minds that Doctor Keter might emerge the first female president of Sierra Leone.
The president has assured us today that he would not use his power and influence to manipulate the election.
"The Scuffle", premiering at the Free Town City Council Auditorium.
Hey, hey, feel it, feel it. Yeah, feel your act, feel your act, feel your act. You know, see your daddy? Oh, Junior Tumu. Junior Tumu, I'm a she, bye. Ah, ah. Wow, wow, so amazing, so amazing. So amazing. Hey, so sad. Come feel Mama like. No, we are with you, so. And they are coming here to support for me, yes, we are in two thousand, last right now, right? Hey, this can not be the law, I know say, this, I know say. Twenty thousand, after him, twenty thousand, oh, Lainey Rethla. Lainey Rethla, we are twenty thousand, oh, yeah, twenty, 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 twenty. No, you know more. Are they care, they be the only. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Oh, yes, are you excited? Are you happy? Are you inspired? I want to say, poku teki to we camera operators them, Daddy Abu Aska and Skype, we don't make you able for enjoy this particular episode, yeah, so. Me, we bring the program come to you, me, now Asana Tula Belsila, so tell we meet back for another edition, ta ta.